Thank you for joining us. Your opening statement, sir.
Okay. Hi, I'm Ron Stafford, candidate for the school board District 2. I'm seeking this office because of so many teachers and our children who have complained or rather had difficulty in trying to be successful in our system. Those people have come to me and truly asked that I try to be a person that get into the system to make a change. Some of the issues that we're facing as we deal with the FCAT testing, there's not something that we, not too much that we can do about the FCAT testing, but yet we can begin to work within our district to try and work with our legislative delegation to make changes, and that's the most important thing. The problems we are seeing, we are determined to be the number one school district in the state, and that's good. But yet, we still have our CDF children, and we have to find some way to try and help our children to be successful across the board. When we look at all of the children in the school district who are trying to graduate, in year, school year 2008 and '09, we had 18 children who received a certificate of completion. In the year '09 and '10, we had 24. In school year '10 and '11, we had 40. This year, we had 69. So being number one is great, but yet we shouldn't have our children looking as if they're collateral damage. So we've got to find a good curriculum that works with our upcoming change in the state law, the Common Core standard, and begin to work with our teachers and to give them some more control or control and autonomy in the classroom so that they can work with our children, that they can be successful and pass any test. So I seek your support in my candidacy. This is not about anyone, it's about our district, it's about our children, and that's what I'm doing, working so that our children can have a successful future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron. Margaret, would you like to be in, or?
I would first ask how we do this, how the school board moves the policy forward to do what you're saying, you know, get rid of or eliminate these certificate of completion students, make them viable so that when they walk across the stage, they get the diploma. So where do you start with that?
Well, the thing that we have to do, those who are in our area that are in the legislation, we meet with the legislative delegation and allow them to see the flaw that's in the system. I don't think they really understand that our children achieve enough credits to graduate, but yet they cannot pass a portion of the FCAT test. And because they can't pass a portion of the FCAT test, then they can't get a diploma. To try and get a job in our community, in our area of life today, we must have a diploma. So if we, our children cannot pass the FCAT test, but yet they have enough credits to graduate, I would think that they should change the law to allow those children to utilize their certificate of completions to at least have the ability to apply for a job. And that's where we must start, and that will allow our children to not feel inferior, but successful in their years of work.
Because I know some students do end up going to summer school to complete, to get the diploma itself.
They're allowed to go to summer school, and yet some of them pass, but then we still have those who can't make it. Those numbers I gave out to you today in my opening statement are those numbers that those who have tried but were unsuccessful. And what do we do with those children? Well, the law says that they can go to community college, and they can have remediation first in community college, and pass the FCAT test, and then start.
College.
College. But yet, they still can't apply for a job if they're not seeking a higher education. Or they can apply for a job, but the job asks for a diploma, and they don't have one.
So that's a legislative issue.
Yes, yes.
State Board of Education policy.
Yes.
And getting the businesses.
Yes.
In a mindset to look at a certificate of completion in a different way.
Very much so.
Okay. Ron?
You talked about in your bio sheet, information sheet, about having the teachers have more control over what's being taught in the classroom. Could you expand on that a bit?
Oh, me.
What do you really mean by that?
When we look at the curriculum that we use today, it focuses on trying to be successful with the FCAT test. And that's the thing that I'm saying. We can be successful with the FCAT test, but we need to allow the teachers to have more control of the classroom. The teachers don't have the ability to choose the children that come in their classroom. They're signed. The children come into the classroom, and the teachers have to work with them with what they have. If they have a curriculum that is based with the teachers and the teachers have control of the classroom, let them identify the children. You have the slow learners, you have those who are in mid-class, and you have those who are higher learners. And let them bring them along to the point, to not say that we know that in February that we have to take the FCAT test. So I know that they have to take the FCAT test, they know they have to take the FCAT test, but if the teachers have more control and are not pushed down the road, then they can have more children successful and allow them to teach in the way and educate our children in the way that they deem necessary.
Does that mean, let me just explore that just a little bit so I get it. Within a classroom, the teacher doesn't have the control of who comes into the classroom, but they can identify these. Do you see those students they identify as high performers or lower performers going to a different classroom or a different, because if they stay in the same classroom, that puts a teacher under some different duress.
And that's what I'm saying. If we're going to be so focused on the test, then we need to allow our children to be successful in that. If they're slow learners, for example, I see evaluating children very important, starting in the eighth grade, I think that we need to get our children focused. If we evaluate our children in the eighth grade of middle school, then we can begin to tunnel our children in the direction that they can be successful. If it's trade, then we need to allow them to move down that path so that they can leave school with something that they can be successful. We can't be so focused on if they can pass the FCAT test, but yet give them a quality of life and education that they can be successful in the outcome.
One of the biggest issues, I'll shift gears a little bit, one of the biggest issues has been, you're familiar with it, and that is the continuing reductions in funding from the state, then even though, even as recently as last evening, I believe, one of the candidates bragged about the $1.3 billion coming back in education, what they felt, they mentioned were the unfunded mandates delivered by the state. Dr. Joyner talks about that being one of the most difficult things they face. Do you have any ideas on the reductions and the way to apply the resources?
Well, I think that when we look at what the state bring in, sometimes we get so focused on that until it becomes a stress point, even in the classroom with the teachers. If you look at merit pay and all of those things that are coming to play. When we look at what we need for our children, we've got to understand that we must, in the district, take care of educating our children. And sometimes we have to just bite the bullet and do the thing that is necessary to get our children to the point of success. They're alleviating the ban at the Sun Oak Street High School. This is what I understand, that the ban is not going to be next year. Now, I don't know if it's true, I've been trying to find out, but this is what I heard from children, that they were told that there's no ban at Sun Oak Street High. But it's supposed to be a school of the arts. I don't understand. So to try alleviate a lot of the pressure and stress that we have, I propose that we have not just band boosters, but district boosters, that we bring our teachers, our parents, the community together, and we become a district booster that's headed up by that district school board member, and it become a 501(c)(3), and we go out and begin to raise the funds that are necessary to support our sports, our band, our arts, and our children can be successful if we put our hands to work. If we have to deal with millage, I look at it in this sense, that's something that could easily happen, but I don't think that if we say we're going to try to increase it five mil, that we do it right now. I think that if we're going to do those type of things, that it needs to be done incrementally. If we need an amount of money, then we need to look at it and then take it incrementally, and then when we get to that point, cut off and not continue to go. But just go to where we need to go so that we can be successful with our children.
I think the school board is working on a new strategic vision, a new strategic plan. Could you share what your, and you've mentioned about teaching to the test and teachers having more control over curriculum in the classroom. Well, what do you see as the vision going forward for the St. John's County School Board?
Well, I think that the district, when we look at the board itself, we need to become more involved in the operation of our day-to-day school system. I don't see being a board member that just goes to board meetings and converses with the superintendent. I see myself going and going to our schools and seeing the issues and seeing the problems that we have, and talking with our children, and talking with our teachers, and with our administrators, and being involved in the hiring. And as we're coming to this merit pay thing, we're going to have teachers who don't have any, that don't have the opportunity to have tenure anymore. They're going to be year-to-year teachers. So they need to have an appeal process. They need to have something that if the principal say, well, you're not a good fit anymore, well, we need to have that opportunity, they need to have that opportunity to come to the board, and the board look at their advancement and help them in a way so that they just can't be, work for a year and be put out to pasture. Because if we do that, then we are not going to have any teachers at all.
I'll be editor P. Dallas here, who always asks this question, so you get this question from me.
Okay.
The state's going to, the school board's got to go to a merit-based, performance-based school system. Being one of the top, if not the top, school board, school system in the state, it would make sense that a large portion of those teachers would be high performers, and therefore entitled to an increase. Yet, there's no money. Where does that money come? How do you administer a merit-based pay system in an environment where dollars are at a minimum?
I understand that our teachers are very smart, so they understand where the board is when it comes to finance, but yet they should be rewarded. When we look at the amount of teachers that we've had that have retired, at least just this year, and the teachers who have retired over the last three years, this law was enacted in 2010, but yet no dollars were added to it. And I would hope that the board at that time moved to take a portion of their dollars that comes from those teachers retiring, because if a teacher retires, the children, I mean, the teachers who are coming to work are not going to make the same salary that a teacher retiring with. So they should take those extra dollars, put those dollars in a fund, especially dealing with the merit pay. As we look at where we are today with all of the teachers who have retired and the amount of teachers who have been hired, we should have a pocket of dollars there so that we could not have an issue with giving merit pay to those who are successful in that vein.
And I ask this because I don't have a clue of, do you have an idea of what the ratio is, how many retire each year versus?
I really don't, but we have a lot.
I've been curious.
We have a lot to retire this year, and I mean a lot. So I think that when we look at those dollars being salary dollars, those dollars should be in that category to be used to help deal with those salary increases.
So they need to build that kind of fund.
Need to have that pocket of dollars there. You know that the state is not going to give you the dollars, so you have to look within yourself to make the budget items so that they can, we can handle that issue. That should have taken place in 2010. They should have, we know we don't have the dollars, we have teachers retiring. If a teacher retired at $40,000 and a teacher's salary starting is $23,000, then we take those extra dollars and we put them in the fund, and they're held there so that we can prepare to give the teachers the merit increases.
Now, you know, teachers have not had raises in several years.
Exactly.
And last year, when we were doing an editorial on how they were going to make it through even deeper, the district, through even deeper cuts, Dr. Joyner said that he and Conley Weiss, and they had explained this to the union, they had taken some money and put it aside so that they were in a position to keep teaching positions.
Rainy Day Fund.
Right, while other districts were having to cut into their teachers because they didn't have money going forward. But what you're talking about is a merit pay rainy day fund.
Yeah, and we need that. When we look at the rainy day fund, the rainy day fund, they call it that, I look at it as a general fund. That's the leftover from all of the other budget items that we just don't use, and we throw it in the pot, and then we can send agenda away. But those funds should be placed in there, and we should be able to use those dollars because they're a general fund in many ways. People say, well, we can't use it for this, and we can't use it for that. Well, after it comes, after the year has passed, and it comes out of that specific budget item, and it goes into this hole, it should be able to, you can use it for whatever, whatever is necessary to keep the system or the train going down the track. It should be used for that.
You had mentioned, I'd like to explore a little bit, I thought it was an interesting idea. You call them, instead of band boosters, district boosters.
District boosters, yes.
Or maybe even school boosters.
Yeah, well, school boosters, yeah.
Do you see that as an avenue? Obviously, what happens with funding reductions is you've got to look where you want to cut, and you have spoken of the ban perhaps being eliminated, and there was talk of Duval County of not having football, not having baseball. Do you see that, this district booster program as something that could help the schools, and not just for programs, but could you just expand that a little bit?
I think it can help in many ways, because you have many nonprofits that are willing to go to support education. And if we have our district boosters or school boosters, or whatever the name may be, and we're supporting each other, each district is supporting each other's program, when we look at the amount of dollars that we can raise, those dollars can go to support the system and make sure that our children still have that ability to have the outlet of sports and band and different types of arts that they can get themselves involved in. It's so important that the children have that outlet, and I think that the parents will get on board, I think businesses will get on board, and they will give so that we can have those things. Because businesses are involved when you have football, you know, they're there. So I think that we can do this, and it can be successful in our community.
Well, there are those that argue that, gee, you just don't have the money, so you can't afford baseball, and you can't afford football, or you can't afford the arts, or you can't afford the band. But what I think I hear you saying, if I'm correct, that those aspects are actually provide another type of education that may not be a book learning.
Yes, well, the thing is, is you have to look at, I think in all sports, it teaches character. It also teaches the ability to understand that we are not always winners, but yet we can still be successful, and we can continue to keep trying to be successful. We learn from, you think of the band, a lot of the children go into the band, and that's their only avenue of moving forward to go to college to get a scholarship in music. So we have many things that the outlets have, that children can leave the high schools and go into colleges and use those things to get an education. So I see it as a support to our children for their education.
Let me talk a little bit or ask a question about the folks of, I'm going to be bold and throw us into our generation, I believe have a different, had a different cultural experience of upbringing, and it's been said by those running and those in other places about the importance of the parent in the educational process. How do you think, or what would be your views of how the school board or you could help that, could encourage that?
Well, one of the things that I see that is so crucial, when we look back at all of the teachers who have retired, I look at the numbers, really an astronomical number, and I see them as being a connection with the parent and the students and the school system. They can't come back into the system and get a job, we can't hire them, but yet we can if they would come together and form an organization and become contractors. We can use them as contractors to assist us in bringing the connection with the parent, because every parent can't be there, every parent don't have the ability and the knowledge to help their children with the homework, but yet those teachers who are still certified can be that connection between the parent and the school system. And we can be successful with our children learning the homework, getting more knowledge about the home that the children are coming out of, and that can help the child itself when the child, that can help us with the discipline, because then we can see and understand, because our teachers really don't have the time to do the visits that they should do, but yet these people can have the opportunity to visit the home, to talk with the parents, and to solicit them in coming into the school and meeting with their teachers. This will help us to get a better connection with the home and the school.
So that's kind of an old-fashioned idea, isn't it? Where.
They're doing business all the time, it's called score.
Yes.
And so, instead of having, and that's exactly it, I was thinking of, you know, they have that opportunity to do that.
Yes.
Yep.
But we have certified teachers, that's still certified, and we should just let them go out to roost. We should keep them tied to us. I think it's so important.
Current class size limits, would you support that? Do you think we ought to expand it?
Well, you know, I think that, and that's why I go back to teacher control, I think teachers truly know how many children they can teach successfully. And when we look at discipline in the school systems, I think that creates a lot of issues in the classroom. I am not a proponent of a 10-day suspension away from school.
Vacation time.
Yeah. I think that if you're going to be suspended, you need to be in school, and if you're fighting in school, I think that you need to go to a class that's in school that deals with anger management, plus do your homework or get your work in school. I think that it's so important that we stop sending children home to empty houses where parents are working every day. So when we look at getting policies that allow our children to stay in school and to know that they can't come and leave, I think that the classroom will become a more friendly place, I think the teachers will have an easier time to deal with the children, and the children will begin to learn even better, because they understand they just can't come and leave and get away with all of the issues that has been going on. We can say we have zero tolerance, yet we say we have the character counts. Okay, well, if character counts, then we allow the zero tolerance to destroy a child who's working very hard to be successful. This child that walks the hall attacks a child that's just trying to get the class, and because this child defend themselves, they both are suspended. Well, if we look at the true character of both of those children, the characters should count for one of them. Why should both of them be suspended and destroyed and sent to an exceptional center and put out of school because of an incident? I think that we need to look at the discipline that we have in our schools and make sure that if we're going to deal with our children for as discipline, we do it in school, they stay in school, and they're put in a place to where they can continue their education rather than going home.
Since moving to this part of Florida, this part of the world actually, I was blown away with, and maybe I just didn't know what other places I've lived, with the dropout rate. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I think, I think the law, the law itself, allow our children to walk away from school. It says that, well, at the age of 16, you can leave, but they say to the parent, you're responsible. I don't understand that. I don't see, what in my day was the truant officer, I don't see anyone that's dealing with these elementary children that I see every day walking the street. I don't see anyone that's trying to deal with these teenagers every day walking the street. If we begin to allow the parents to allow their children to not go to school, then we are the ones that's supporting the dropout rate.
So what, so what can the school board do?
Well, I think that if it's our responsibility to make sure that children are in school, then we need to take on the responsibility and be firm with it. If you're supposed to be in school and you're not there, then somebody needs to knock on the door. We have people that's supposed to be hired and doing those jobs. It's not your job to sit in the office, it's your job to get up and go and get the list and know who's not in school and go for it, and to challenge the parents. They passed the law that says that you are supposed to do this. Well, let's use it. Let's make sure that it has some teeth in it, and if it has teeth, then someone needs to get bitten.
Who? Margaret, Marshall?
I am curious, talking about parents and people more involved in the school system, and yet there is a big problem with apathy, with the people who move down and say, or live here and say, I don't have any children in school, why should I pay taxes, why do, why do I have to, what difference does school make? Those kids, I shouldn't have to pay for anything. How do you answer them?
Well, I say to them, when you were in the area that you moved from, it was a very important thing to educate your children. And if you have moved into an area, then it should be just as important for you to educate the children that are here. Because if we keep them in school and we educate them, then we don't see them breaking into your home, we don't see them robbing you at the 7-Eleven. We see them going to try and get an education. So if we provide for them, then we get them off the street, into school, and give them an education, then they can become the air-conditioned repairman that comes to your house, or the yard man that cuts your grass. That's what I say. So a millage that height should not struggle you to know that you're going to have people that's coming to your house that's not coming to rob you or to break in.
So we should be willing, even though we don't have children.
Do.
To.
Schools are part of this community.
Paying for the schools.
Schools are part of this community. The district is a part of this community. We should take on the responsibility to educate our children. That's what we're supposed to be doing.
Very good.
Let me about, let's go back to crime in the schools. And we have, I believe we still have school resource officers in the schools.
I think they've cut some of them, but.
They still have a problem.
Yeah.
That would obviously be, in your background, be something you would want the schools to either improve on, or, you know, at least keep them maintained status quo.
I have.
But what role should those people who are in the schools every day be playing in this in-school suspension discipline-type program? Or should they have a role?
You hit the nail on the head. I think, see, I see school resource officers with a whole different vein. I think that within a district that we have is growing as big it is, we need to have our own district police. I know in different states, we have our own, they have their own district police. And that's what they do. They patrol the districts, they patrol the schools, they monitor them after hours. Those are the things that make sure that the school is safe. We don't have to worry about waiting for an officer to come. They're there every day. Those officers are the ones that deal with those who are in school and fighting. They will be the ones that's teaching the anger management and dealing with the children who are in school suspended. I think that that's so important that they are there. And when this happens and they know that they have to go to this class and they're dealing with the law enforcement officer rather than the teacher. You see what I'm saying? We're going to have a better child coming out of a suspension, I think, than we had going in. So, I think that we really need to look at law enforcement in the schools and not just bringing deputies and they are there sometime. You know, we have the school resource officers program, but they can be used by the department at any time and pulled out at any time to go anywhere that's necessary. Because they are truly employees of the sheriff's office. But I think that if they're going to be there, they need to be employees of the district. The district is paying a nickel.
And it's going to cost money?
Yeah.
That's going to be the response?
Yeah.
How it can take on?
Sure, it's going to cost money. Another thing that we have that's going to cost money and we need to have, and that's monitors on these school buses. We're going to end up spending more money one of these days when a bus run off of a bridge because the bus driver was not paying attention and trying to deal with an issue in the back of a bus and it run, and killed someone or run over someone. Those are the issues we have. A camera cannot monitor children. I don't care if it's a dean out of the schools in the morning and they switch them around and the deans have to go and ride the buses. We need to have people with some teeth that's sitting in the back of the bus and monitoring the bus rather than the bus driver. If it's resource officers, whatever it takes, we need to look at the vicarious liability that we're billing for ourselves. And it's going to cost us even more than the dime that we will spend to get it in place.
So, you're saying the school board should be responsible for that?
Sure.
Aspect too?
Yes.
In terms of dollars?
Yes.
Where are they going to come from?
From, just like anything else. We have to pay for it.
I understand.
I know people don't want to hear that, but.
But that slices the pie even smaller.
But the thing is, is that the pie is there. So, if we've sliced the pie even smaller, then we have to go and bake a new pie. We have to make it happen. And sometimes it hurts. But then, we have to look at the outcome. We have to look at the success. We have to look at the need. We can't just continue to say that it's going to cost and we can't afford it without a solution. Why do we keep saying that it can't, we can't, we can't, but yet we have no solutions?
Well, you know, we keep hearing from the district that we are protecting the classrooms when they do their budgets. We're protecting the money that goes into a classroom.
Well, I thought that came from the state.
Well, it comes from the state.
Because of this.
Protecting.
Because of the students that comes. They say that we have such an influx into our county because we are number one. So, every student that goes into that classroom is more dollars. So.
But not all of those dollars go back into classroom. They have, some go to administration as well. Is that still the?
Goes everywhere.
Yeah.
So, it goes everywhere. So, the buses, it goes cafeteria, you know, it is a vast, folks and all that.
So, why do we look to the state to fund our district?
Because that's how the system's set up.
I understand. So, we ourselves, we have no responsibility for our district.
No, we pay taxes.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. We pay taxes and our tax dollars should also blend in with what's there.
So, what I hear you saying, I think, is that we need to look at how we prioritize the pie and how many things beyond the actual classroom hours need to be funded, like band, like all youth resource officers running an in-school suspension program or being a strong part of it. So, those are the kinds of things. That's what, okay.
You see, when we look at, when we look, when we look at budgeting, one of the things that people fail to do is that they fail to look at the budget items that are so important to the education of the children. They look at themselves. So, let's stop looking at ourselves and look at what we're trying to do.
So, I understand that too. So, the idea of protecting the classroom funding really goes beyond the classroom. It's more about protecting what we do for the students.
Yes. I thought that's our number one priority, is our children.
Yeah.
And to do that, we've got to have our teachers.
While we're on money, there's a push by the legislature to allow more options of education than simply charter schools. Where do you stand on that? And they come under the district, but only briefly. And they have very little power over them except to allow, help them set up their first. Then that money that for each of those children, the FTE dollars, goes to the, goes from the public schools into the charter schools. Where do you stand on charter schools?
Well, I don't think that anything should occur that hurts the district. I'm not for anything that hurts the district. I understand charter schools are very important in their place. But I see them as an entity that if you're going to be in a district and in a zone, then you should accept the same as the district. ESE students, whatever the problem is. I think that those children should, if the parent said, "Well, I want my child to go to this charter school," I think that you should have to take those children. You shouldn't just say that we can't or we are not, or we are full or whatever. Well, make some room, make some way that you can take care of the children. You cannot be a school and not function as the general public school. You should have to function just like any public school.
A charter school.
Yes, and coming to the board to get approval, you need to come to the board prepared to look just like the school that we already have in place.
So, the point you're making is they operate with a different set of rules than they should not?
Yes. If you're going to be a school, then be a school.
And you're taking public money, so you.
Yeah. So, if you've got the dollars, then take the problems.
I don't know how that works, eh? I got one last question, or I have my final question. And I don't know if anybody's ever asked this, not in this time, but one of the topics, period, across America now is obesity and eating habits. Schools have been chided for taking the cafeteria and the break rooms and turning them into profit centers, sugar dispensaries, fat farms or whatever you want to call it. What do you see from this school board and what are your views on that?
You know, I sit back and I look at when I went to school. We had full meals. Maybe they were not, but people would expect. But it was just like being at home. We had collard greens, we had meatloaf, we had fried chicken, we had cornbread. We had, we had a full rounded meal that was cooked. It wasn't processed. It wasn't full of salt. So, I'm just a proponent of going back and if you're going to have a cafeteria, let them cook. Let them prepare the meals rather than going in and allowing them to microwave the meals and laying it out and children having hamburgers and french fries or whatever it is. I mean, it's just, I mean, if you're going to do that, then you get rid of all of the cafeteria employees and let McDonald's move in.
And some schools have done that.
Yeah, so, and that's, is that promoting the community? Is that supporting our community? No. I mean, those jobs are very important. So, let them go back to doing what they've done for years. We say that we want to train them to be chefs, but then we don't want them to work in our system. Doesn't make sense to me. So, let them start preparing healthy meals for our children. I mean, they'll pay five, six, $10 for the other stuff. So, why are people crying about a meal going up to $2.10? Yeah, maybe it ought to be $3.
And how do you feel? One of the things that we've been discussing with congressional candidates is the money that comes back for education, health issues, roads, bridges and all that kind of thing. So, you would be on the receiving end as a member of the school board making decisions. How do you think those dollars should work in a district like the federal dollars that come?
Well, you know, they had to complain that the federal dollars coming in and dealing with the free lunch program. Well, if you're going to say, "No child left behind," then let your dollars prove it. So, let's put them in the classroom, let's put them. And I look at them and say, if they're going to say, "No child left behind," then maybe those dollars should also support our teachers. When we look at merit pay, if you're going to give us the dollars, then don't put restrictions on them. Let us use them the best way we think that it will fit. And that's important.
Rod, you have the closing opportunity to have the last word here.
Well, I thank you so much for inviting me. I've truly enjoyed you. I've truly enjoyed the questions. I can only say that one of the things that I truly want to do is to work so that our children can become successful. To go out and do it and let it be fun. I ask the support of our community, those in District 2, to know that I will work for you, I will work hard for you, and I will do all of I can, all I can, to make all of our children successful children and not allow any to leave our school feeling inferior. I thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.